Good evening. I'd like to bring the Board of Education meeting for June 21st, 2017, to order. Thank you. As a first point of business, why don't you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have six members of our board here tonight. Mr. Checo is absent. Before we jump into the agenda, I'd like to make an announcement. We received a letter from Mrs. Lerner, who's here to my right, on June 12th, and I just wanted to read it into the record and make a couple of remarks. Dear Ms. Locke, it was addressed to Joan Lockhart, Town Clerk. It is with regret that I am writing to inform you of my decision to resign my position on the Brookfield Board of Education effective June 22nd. It has been a great pleasure to serve on the Board of Education, and I am grateful to the community to allow me this opportunity, and I am proud of all that we have accomplished. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Best regards, Tara Lerner. So Tara is stuck in doubt as to tomorrow? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I just want to say, Tara, you and I have served for a year and a half now together, and it's been a joy.
Thank you.
You have been the voice of the children, and the voice of pragmatic and do the right thing. So, and I'll tell you what, I loved it.
That's what working through.
Very sorry to see you go.
Thanks, Bob.
And from for all the board, I'd like to wish you best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to have any comments you'd like to make?
You know, the only thing that I have to say is I'm grateful to the previous board for giving me the opportunity. They had seven candidates to choose from. For whatever crazy reason, like Susan shaking her head, I have no idea what they were thinking. You know, but I'm grateful, and I'm grateful to the community. So for that, I will ever be touched, honored. We've done a lot of great things. We've seen a lot of interesting things, haven't we, not Harry?
We have.
But all in all, it was, it was a great experience, and I will always cherish it. So, you know, again, I can't thank the community enough for trusting, you know, a mom, a construction management professional that retired to raise children, the opportunity to sit here and to try and get this ship back onboard, moving in the right direction. And I, and I see a great future. I'm grateful for the administration. I'm grateful to the teachers. I'm grateful to the parent professionals and all the other staff. Without them, this board doesn't mean anything. And for that, I thank them.
Thank you.
Bob, is a sitting member of the board that...
No, no, now I'm in trouble.
I did make that decision. You know, here, we're sitting here, and it was certainly the right decision. And I think the thing that I am, that I think about when I think of Tara is her ability and willingness to take stands on what she firmly believed. And whether it was popular, whether it wasn't popular, she stuck to her guns, and it has been a pleasure. And we've bumped heads, and we've also...
Harry, how could you say such a thing?
We've also had some really good conversations, and it's just been a pleasure to be with, and I wish you the best.
Thanks. I truly appreciate it.
I just want to echo Harry's words. I was one of the sitting board members that made that crazy, stupid decision. That doesn't seem so stupid anymore.
Yeah.
That was a very good decision that the board made. I think it was the best, one of the best decisions we as a board made was to bring you on because your commitment to not only the children, but to the community as a whole is very impressive. And Collette and I were talking a little bit earlier tonight about the grad party. And, you know, and when you walk in there and you see all on a volunteer basis what parents and local community members do for our students, and you sit back and you wonder, wow, we have such a great town. And it's because of people like those that donate their time to making this amazing party possible, and it's the people like yourself that put hours upon hours upon hours upon hours into this community, into the students of this district for nothing other than just to give back. And we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you.
Yeah.
And what I respect most about you, Tara, is that every time we may have disagreed on an issue, not too, too often, but once in a blue moon we did.
Yeah, we did.
And what I liked most about you, Tara, is that you've always respected everybody's position. At the end of the day, you respected the other individual at the end. And we need more of that in politics today and in government today. So thank you for your service to this town, and I'm really, 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 from the bottom of my heart, going to miss you here on this board.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, and as a new board member, I don't know who I'm going to make faces at anymore, Tara. I'm going to be lost. Thank you so much for your friendship, for your direction, for helping me along as a new board member. I'm really going to miss you, and I'm sorry to see you go, but I completely support everything that you're about. And, you know, the fact that we were always on the same page, always for the kids, was just at my heart all the time. And I can't thank you enough for your service to our great town Brookfield, and thank you for not talking behind my back.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
I wanted to thank you for your relentless pursuit of what is best for both the children and the community. And it's been a true pleasure to be here for these last year and a half, and I will miss you very much.
I did good until Collette. Okay, all right, we're going to start throwing things out. She does. You know. All right, thank you.
We love you.
Thank you for making me cry, Collette.
You've done a great job.
I do, I appreciate it.
We had a bet on who would do it.
Yeah, it was polite. You know, it would be, gives you that look of like, you're really doing this, like, you know. Same with I've been since I read the letter.
Let me ask the administration if Tara can...
Tara, do we have to? Yes, we have your email. So even though you won't be close by, we still will be able to get in touch with you.
You know, it's like I said to you last night, I, I see it as an opportunity to give you insight to a different world. And for that, you know, I know I won't be here, but you and I both know I'm just a phone call away.
We appreciate that.
You know, so I think it might not be so bad, as we've all talked about, looking outside the box, that there might be a little bit of things that maybe we haven't thought about in this district that I can now shed some light on.
And we appreciate that. But I wanted to say, the thing that, you know, having met you, that, that parent voice that you have has been so important to the work that we do.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, the parents really are...
Yes.
At the heart of everything that we do.
Yes.
They trust us with their kids.
Absolutely.
Every single day.
Absolutely.
And so bringing that, I mean, we have other parents on the board, but you're a current parent, and so you really have your finger on the pulse of what's going on. And I think that you were appropriate in the way you handled things that were very emotional.
Yes.
And you were spokesperson for so many people, and we need to know that in order to do our work. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Tara, I will just simply say, we've been on the same page. The sole reason for the existence of this board and our profession is the students. And if you have that and you're together with people who care and want to work really hard, we can't lose. So thank you for everything, and thanks for being a part of the team that brought me on board. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Can I just say I'm going to miss you buzzing the door? If anybody knows, I'll just, I'll let the secret out now, because you have the buzzer system at TSO. I would always try and make a face, or I would show my baseball cap, or I would have my back to her, or I'd be like, are you going to open the door and let me in now, please? I think they did it deliberately for that way they couldn't give me a badge to allow me to use, just for I could, you know. But it was, I kept it entertaining because if you can't laugh in life, then what you have. Correct, Harry?
I agree.
So. Thanks, thanks.
We have a little, that's tradition. The tradition, the traditional bow for, for the party members.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Okay, now that we've gotten through all that, can we get back to what we're here to do, which is our dog and pony show?
On a, on a related matter, the, we will advertise for this opening tomorrow that will tell the public how we will take applications. I will just tell everybody, we've received four applications for this vacancy, even though we haven't announced it yet. So it's always interesting when that happens.
Yep.
And, but the applications will be open until July 14th, I think we decided, and the board in later in the month of July will, will go through interviews and make a selection process. The board does have 60 days to fill this opening, and if we don't fill the opening within 60 days, it will go to the Board of Selectmen to fill the opening. And we intend to fill it ourselves, so. So with that, why don't we move into the main part of the agenda? So first up is the year-end report from our athletic director, Steve Baldwin.
Good morning. Thank you. Good evening. This was a banner year, and then some for us.
Wow.
I'd just like to go through the report and just talk about a few things. If you look at the first page, on the right-hand side, it talks about unique names. And so there were 549 student, students at Brookfield High School that played athletics this team this year. That represents 66% of our student body played athletics, which is outstanding. I don't know if there's any other high school in the state that could top that number. C I A C has 29 recognized athletic sports. We participate in 27 of the 29. Next year, that'll be 28 of 29. We'll have, we're looking into, I can't say we're definite, we're looking into having a gymnastics team of one with New Milford. And then the only other sport that we don't have would be boys volleyball, which hopefully in the near future we will get. This year, we were fortunate enough to receive a Michael's Cup for exemplary athletic program in the state. This is a total group effort. This goes from organization, from the Board of Ed, superintendents, through schools, me, the coaches, the kids, Booster Club, you know, where we follow the rules, we do everything right, we have bylaws with the Booster Club. This is a total team effort. It has nothing to do with anything that I did, has everything to do with what you all do on a daily basis for the athletes. So thank you. This year, we're also named Special Olympics Unified Banner School. This is fantastic, being that it's the second year we've had unified sports, and we'll continue to grow. Make sure we hope to have three seasons of it. This year, we had soccer and basketball, make sure we hope to have tracker volleyball in the spring. As you know, we have four state championships this year: girls' swimming, boys' soccer, boys' swimming, and boys' basketball. We have five S W C championships, three overall champions, and two division champions. Two other great awards that we received are the girls' golf team and the girls' field hockey team received sportsmanship awards from the S W C. We also had four individual state champions. Lauren Vaz won twice in indoor and outdoor track, Khaled Almedy won outdoor track, and Hannah Weinstein for girls' swim and dive. The next one's truly amazing. So as you see, we had 549 athletes. Of those 549, 350 are varsity athletes. 201 of the 350 athletes received all academic honors. That means 201 out of 350 varsity athletes have a GPA of 3.75 or better.
Wow.
We had one all-American, Emily Tracy, and Dance. And the next two, it's, it's amazing, the athletes that we have. 21 athletes were named all-state this year, 74 were named to the all-S W C teams. And I also like to recognize that we have new basketball scoreboards in the small gym and at Whiskinier Middle School, and those were donated by the Brookfield Basketball Association. And if you look outside, we have new scoreboards for the baseball field and the back turf, which was a combination of donations from the Booster Club and Chick-fil-A and the rest of it was paid by us. But the majority of it was paid by them. And please join us at our Booster Club fundraiser, the Sunset Social, on August 4th. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm just going to start by saying, wow, what a, what a great...
Well, you were at the awards ceremony.
And I would say that at that award ceremony, you could feel all of what you said. The number of awards banners across the front of the stage when we started, and those were over the four years that this...
They were, yeah.
But it filled the entire front of the stage. It was, it was amazing, the accomplishments of our athletes. But to me, the most telling item here is the 201, who were also excellent students, in addition to being excellent athletes.
That, and the amount of students that we have participated.
Yep.
It's a great community.
That's great.
I wanted to express my thanks to the Brookfield Basketball Association and the All Sports Booster Club and Chick-fil-A for the generous donations.
That's awesome.
To enable...
You know, for both schools, Whiskinier and here.
I've, being a past president of the Brookfield Basketball Association, we've had a very healthy relationship with the town and with using the schools, and they're very appreciative of, now I referee some of their games, but they're very appreciative of what the town has, you know, done and the support we've had in being able to come into the schools. But also, I'd like to thank you, Steve, because it starts at the top, and being as involved as I have been for the last, well, 25 years in athletics here and sports, it's great to see the fruits of all the work from the F-division soccer and the Little League and T-ball, right up through, so.
And we have the organizations at town are very supportive of everything we do, and, you know, encourage the athletes to give back to those organizations as well.
Sure, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work, because again...
Thank you.
A lot of it comes from the top in organization and, you know, keeping people accountable and coaches a convoy. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Everybody enjoy.
Yeah, Dave, yeah.
And next up on our agenda is the year-end report from the Brookfield Education Foundation.
Good evening, everyone. I am Susan Queen, and I am very proud to be the president of the Brookfield Education Foundation. And I must say, I did not know, I should have put it together that this would be your last meeting, Tara, but as a former Board of Ed member and someone who was with Harry and Steve when we appointed you to the position, I have to say, it was a pleasure serving with you during a very tenuous time. And I'm going to keep it real, because you guys were all really nice. There was about a two-year period where anytime I saw Tara's number come up on my cell phone, I shuddered a little bit. I was like, oh, no, what's going to happen now? But I am so happy for you that you've had the opportunity to serve under the new administration, with the new board, although our board was wonderful as well, but with a new administration and all the progress that has been made. So good for you, and enjoy more time with your family. Your boys were always your motivation for what you did on the Board of Eds, so good for you. Now, back to the Brookfield Education Foundation. I am so proud to be able to report that the Brookfield Education Foundation has had another incredibly successful year. In 2017, we awarded grants in excess of $31,000. And some of the grants that we provided include signage for the Silver River Greenway, mobile makerspace at Brookfield Library, a climbing wall at Center School, a math lab at Whiskinier Middle School, which includes the standing desks, which have been incredibly popular. We did the music and mentors program at Whiskinier Middle School, and we are implementing tower gardens at Whiskinier Middle School as well to provide healthy eating as well as science and math learning. These grants are funded by our fundraising efforts, and I would like to thank Catherine Siriello and Kristi Luhansis for co-chairing our most successful gala to date in October of 2016. They had an amazing team of volunteers who worked diligently for months to make, create a wonderful event, and we're already planning this year's gala, so mark your date, October 27th, 2017. And this year, the gala is under the chairmanship of Leanne Bucciello, and we ask you to check our Facebook page and website for more details, and our Facebook, our website is BrookfieldEducationFoundation.org. We would also like to thank the community who donated to our annual fund drive in February, and also during Teacher Appreciation Week. The Brookfield Education Foundation was proud to host our popular honor and education program. This year, over 225 families and townspeople were recognized as either educators, coaches, and volunteers in Brookfield. And I'd like to thank Kristen Joshi, Christine Lennon, and Linda Wagner for chairing this program. The B E F ended our school year with a very generous donation from the Moms Club of Brookfield. Each year, the Moms Club of Brookfield does various fundraises, fundraisers, excuse me, and then chooses an organization or group to donate their monies to. The B E F is very proud to be chosen as the recipient and are incredibly grateful. So thank you to the Brookfield Moms Club. I would be remiss if I did not thank the outstanding volunteer... I would be remiss if I did not thank the outstanding volunteers who comprise the Board of Directors for the B E F. And they are Linda Delucia, who is our secretary, Christine Lennon, our treasurer, Catherine Siriello, Kristi Lynn Hosses, Christian Joshi, Kathy Lasser, Kimberly McCarthy, Tom Murphy, Linda Wagner, John Brill, Superintendent Ex officio, Yvonne Chek, Director at the Brookfield Library, Carol Dories, our founder, Jonathan Gidney, Technology Chair, Colette Sturm, who's our Brookfield Education Board of Ed member and former president, and Ellen Melville, Director of Brookfield Seniors and Social Services. While the B E F provides grants and education, I'm sorry, grants and support for educational opportunities throughout our town, we could not do it without the constant support of our community. To the town of Brookfield, thank you for allowing the B E F to continue its mission of providing funding for innovative, educational, and self-sustaining programs. We hope that one of our grants has impacted your experience in Brookfield. Thank you and have a safe and relaxing summer.
Thank you, Susan.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
I just wanted to make a follow-up comment with the gala that last year's was sold out. So, please keep an eye out for it. And there'll be plenty of release, and I'm sure I will mention it, when tickets go on sale, but it was a phenomenal, phenomenal evening out for everyone. So, we hope to see everyone there this year.
Excellent. All right, so, next up on the agenda is public comment. Did we have anybody? No, we have nobody who signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who wanted to make a public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Written correspondence?
Written correspondence from Mark and Jacob Mulvaney regarding bus incident and several inquiries regarding the upcoming vacancy due to Tara Leonard's resignation.
Okay, thank you. Board minutes?
Recommended motion that the Board approve the minutes listed below as recommended. The regular meeting of 6:00, 7:10, 17:00. Second.
Right, it's moved and seconded. Any comments on the minutes? Flaver?
Hi.
All right. Okay, passes unanimously. Superintendent's update. So, Mr. Brill, let me turn it over to you for your update.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Belland. I just would like to inform the Board of a kindergarten enrollment update. Just worked with, on the most recent numbers with Dr. Salon this week. For next year, right now, we have 141 students registered with the eight sections we have planned. That puts us at 17.6 students per class. Our range in kindergarten, our board guidelines are 17 to 20. So, if the number stays the same, we're in a very good position. As we know, our experience is that over the next couple of months of summer, we can gain anywhere from 10 to 20 to even 30 students, so...
I was gonna ask, what was last year? Do you have an idea what the ballpark was between the end of the year to the beginning of day one of what the enrollment became for kindergarten?
We gained more, we gained about 15 students over the summer, 15 to 20.
15 to 20.
Last summer, we were still, the condominiums at Four Corners were still realizing a lot more children than we expected this summer.
Gotcha.
So, we still, I'm ballpark, and I really...
Listen, I would never hold you to it, but it was more of a, just trying to understand...
I think we could end up safely, I'm thinking, if we get 15 more kids, we'd end up at about 18 kids a class, which is a really nice, that'd be a good number.
Okay.
We'd have to go pretty far to end up 4 to 20, because then, you know, you still have to then take some pretty big incremental jobs.
Okay. Because I do know there are still parents out there, just because, you know, I've talked to them and I know there's still that are on the fence...
That haven't even pulled papers.
That haven't pulled papers. You know, so that's why I asked, like...
Eleven that have pulled papers.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, like, we saw packets out...
All the family kids have gone, have come and collected there, and that number seems to be settling down. Because for a while, they're still adjusting their numbers and then those kids start to show up. That seems to have settled down.
Okay. So, we have registration packets, I mean, those that have picked up packets but haven't returned them yet?
Right. The secretary has called those people and we, they still intend...
Okay, so they voiced their intention.
Especially when it's this time, people are like, oh, I can do that later this summer, I'll get on it, and then they never come.
And does this, so does this figure include those that have verbally acknowledged it or just...
No, this includes, this includes, there's about 11 that are registration packets that Dr. Salon just referred to. So, the 141 assumes that those 11 will register.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. So, we're including, okay.
So, I'm just gonna, pardon me, I'm gonna repeat, because the people on TV can't really hear. So, let me, so I think to answer the question, last year was 15 to 20 additional, but we expect perhaps a little bit less this year because of what was happening last year. But even in that, even in that range, it would get only about 18 per class. And so, we're in, right now, still safely in bounds with the eight sections. Is that I get that, capture that about right? Unless there's a big surprise?
Yes.
Can I ask though, math-wise, if we're at 17.6 students per class now and there's eight sections, 15 more wouldn't put it at 18.
Put it at 19.
They'd put it at 19.6 about.
Which is, and 19 is the target.
Yeah.
20 is the upper part of the range.
All right, just...
Yep, you're right.
We're hovering.
We're hovering in the range.
Yeah, okay.
The question I had was, when would you have to make a decision if we had to hire an additional teacher for an additional section? When, what time, when is that moment?
Yeah, I mean, we never want to wait till the last minute. We have a board meeting scheduled in July, we'll be keeping tabs on it frankly, you know, weekly, to see where we're at. We'll have to make decisions. I mean, if we get a big rush of 15, all of a sudden, by mid-July, and there's still a lot of time left, we could be really taking a serious look at, you know, opening up...
Renegades and you're...
Communicating with the Board of Finance and so forth.
Yeah. It'll have to be at that point in time, just because of...
Because you have to hire...
Dividing classes up.
Because all school districts are hiring, so you start to, you know, you start to lose the multiple options.
And before we communicate with parents whose, what teacher their child will have, we don't want to be making class lists and redoing class lists and having children, parents counting on one teacher and not another.
We can stay within the eight that we had planned and then let's check it at the next meeting.
You've got it. Next, just an update for the Board of Education in terms of our accountability measures. As you know, the principals off of the district implementation plan create school improvement plans with their team annually. And so, they've rounded out and have collected their student assessment data with their teachers for the end of the year. We also have other data that works with our school improvement plans, which are our climate surveys. Principals are compiling that data and will be submitting their school improvement plans in the next week to Dr. Ruby and myself. And then we take, take the time, go through those plans, work with our principals, and then, over the next month to six weeks, we look at that data along with the August Smarter Balance Assessment data that comes in, and A P data that comes in over the summer, and we'll put a report together for the Board for the, toward the end of the summer.
Does the Board get to see the details of the climate survey?
Absolutely. We have, so, what's interesting, we can say that...
I'd be very interested, for one, so, yeah.
We can do that. Also, when we think about professional development and the summer work that we're about to engage in, under Dr. Ruby and our new Director of Instruction, who will be introduced in a little while, we have a lot of work planned and just extend an invitation to the Board of Education, as always, you're always invited to attend any of the summer work sessions. We can get a schedule out to you. Summer days are a little more flexible and not as determined based upon teacher schedules that are working on the curriculum committees. In addition to that, though, we do have professional development, some professional development scheduled, especially at the end of August. And those days will be published and you're always welcome to attend. So, we just want to make sure you're well aware of that.
Could you please send out those notes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then...
I'd like to go this year, so I didn't go last year.
Yeah, 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 we'd love to have you guys there.
I'd actually go to a lot of meetings.
Anytime, anytime. And then I had three other items that I thought I should mention during the Superintendent Report this evening. Matt Spill, our valedictorian, created a senior class of 2017 slideshow that is, I believe, Kathy Lisa has up on our website at this point?
Yes.
It's on the website now, it'll also be on Channel 194. Pictures of the kids from the class of 2017.
Although I don't believe he's a valedictorian.
I apologize. In our top 10.
He is top 10.
I confused, I confused. My apologies. Yes, Mark?
[unintelligible].
Everything is the same, no changes. Thank you, Mr. Bellanda.
Mark just about lost it there, 2.5.
We can go over the edge, but Mark was first.
I'll bring it down to the next school level, to Whiskinier, for a second, then I'll go back to the high school. At Whiskinier, Mrs. Gordon is senior, so I'd like to thank her along with Dr. Pepsoski and Mr. Renda and the parents that put on a, and the faculty that came. They did a fantastic stepping up ceremony, moving up ceremony for our eighth graders. Beautiful ceremony, serious and solemn, and also lighthearted at the same time. I mean, it really just struck a nice balance of academia and love and care. It was just amazing to see. So, it's just, we're so proud of the kids and they're freshmen now, so we're excited about that. Just had to give them a nice shout-out. In addition, the first ever graduation walk for Brookfield High School took place today. I'd like to thank, and I believe it was Ms. Joshi last year, and...
Yep.
...brought it up to Mr. Bellanda and I to take the idea of a graduation walk, where the seniors, today, last day of school, wore their caps and gowns and visited the two elementary schools and the middle school, walked through. And the principals of those schools hosted and the teachers were in, kids were out in the hallways, throwing confetti, high-fiving, getting to see the students, and of course, teachers seeing their old students, students seeing their former teachers. I mean, you just can't beat it. It was, it was incredible. So, I think it's a tradition, Mark, we're gonna continue. Yeah, really positive turnout.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it was great, it was great. And that is all I have, Mr. Belland.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this Superintendent?
I do believe Kristen Joshi is in the process of creating a slideshow of all of the photos and some video clips that we have all pulled together. I was fortunate enough to be able to be at Huckleberry for theirs and so picked up, in addition to some clips, even some of the teachers that have been there since these students were there, and so they gave a couple of congratulatory speeches to. It was really awesome.
Oh, cool. Okay. By the way, I will, I want to tell the Board, as you all know, I've started attending the Board of Finance meetings as a regular visiting liaison. Ken Post presented on our, on our Munis implementation status and the Board of Finance received that very well. I've gotten lots of compliments on the depth of the work that's going on. So, Ken, I want to thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
We needed it. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, for doing that.
Yeah.
I think it's important.
Yeah, and I've reminded Rob that I would like to have him assign someone to come to our Business and Facilities Committee so that, so that we can build that connection both ways, so...
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brill. You're welcome. Next up are our Subcommittee Reports. So, first up is Communications.
Okay, good, good. All right, this was last month, so I'm actually gonna pull up a few things here. We met, I gotta get to my notes. Wow, I am so unprepared tonight. What happened to me? We met the first part of May, I know it's been a little bit, a while back ago, so I apologize for this, we didn't quite get moving minutes up and ready for the previous meeting. Facebook page, we talked about, at this point, there's 759 followers. Facebook had revised their procedures related to the comment section, so we asked Eric Cocklin to put a statement up on the Facebook page to ask anybody who is on the page to be respectful when posting comments. We are still monitoring that. I have not heard anything back, so no news is good news in my eyes about any negativity. That will not be allowed on that page and we did make a statement about that. We talked about video streaming, obviously, we're going to be changing the service up. We did a test run, we're switching over to YouTube. We did a test run with the town meeting that we did back on May 2nd to see how that was gonna go. Kind of worked out the kinks a little bit before we start firing this up in July. There was a couple of minor hiccups, nothing that was crazy. A lot of it had to do with mics, with the wireless mics, so we seem to have gotten that corrected, so I'm excited about that. And I think it's gonna be really great because financially, it's net zero. And I'm grateful for that. The parent portal, that seems to be my thing, I guess. I wanted him to, I asked Mr. Conlin if he can talk about the, investigate the digital locker and setting up over the summer to allow parents to give permission to the teachers in the classroom all of their information. I've noticed over the years, and I'm sure administration in the buildings can attest to this, where we have open houses, we bring all the parents into the individual classrooms, they have time for the teachers to tell you everything about the classroom, and then, oh by the way, we need you to give us all your information, your address, your telephone number, your cell number, your email address. And I think it would be beneficial for the staff that they didn't have to go through that and start to chase parents down, for that they can have the access to that information. So, I'm gonna kind of bypass that on open houses to allow the teachers to actually start having conversations about what they do in the classrooms and how their classroom is going to function for that school year. So, he's gonna set that up in the digital locker so that they automatically have to, they have the option that they have to accept it. For that way, I'm hoping, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, I'm gonna send that email out before it gets shut down, to Eric, to make sure that then the teachers will have a full list before open house.
Of who they...
Of who they have.
So, they're just dealing with exceptions.
Exactly. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Colette and I talked about protocol. We've been talking about responses to the community. As we all know, we've had multiple requests on multiple times, looking for email to be responded to, and so, Colette was gracious enough a while back ago to send out how we handle written correspondence. So, if you guys will bear with me, I'm gonna read it one more time for we all understand. For correspondence addressed to the Superintendent and other administration with the C C to the B O E, the Superintendent and/or Administrator will reply with a C C to the B O E. For correspondence sent to B O E, the B O E Chair will reply with a C C to the Board. For correspondence sent to an individual Board member, that Board member will reply with, with a copy or C C to the Secretary, so the correspondence can be recorded. If the correspondence is pertinent to the entire Board, the Board will also be C C'd on that email and copy, or a copy forwarded to them. We talked about timeliness as well. Emails from the public will be acknowledged within one business day of receipt. A full response or reply will be supplied within two to three business days. You know, I understand we all have busy schedules, but, you know, at the end of the day, the community is who we report to. So, I think we owe that to them and the respect that they give us, I think we need to give the respect back to them. So, just a reminder to everybody that we do need to check emails, stay on top of email, and acknowledge the email, okay? The other thing we talked about, I brought up this concern, we, in correspondence, we had gotten an email from a parent talking about, obviously, we're in the technology era, so we deal with iPhones, iPads, other tablets, other phones, and we deal with apps. And so, I addressed it to I T, talking about how we can possibly lock down these apps during the school days in the buildings. Some of them are not appropriate for children and they're not conducive to our rules and our regulations of how we treat one another in the building. So, with that, Eric was gonna take a look at it, there was a couple of apps that I gave a list of that I wanted him to lock down immediately. He actually came back and is looking at a web filter called iBoss. And what it does is it stays on top of all the up-to-date, because obviously, we know new apps happen every minute around the world are created. So, with iBoss, it enhances the security on the Wi-Fi within all these buildings and it stays up-to-date with the new apps. So, if there's something that meets the filter criteria, it will automatically lock it down. So, as opposed to looking for somebody to monitor and try and find it and then search for it and then finally lock it down, the software will automatically lock it up. So, he was looking into that and I think that's something as a Board and as a school district, we really need to start investing in, because we don't need inappropriate apps and inappropriate communications within our buildings. So, and that was about it. Any questions?
Will that, will that come forward as, through the Communications Subcommittee?
I believe it will.
Through the Board?
Yep. He was, he was going to look at the web filter and we were gonna start taking a look at exactly the criteria.
The criteria, the price and criteria.
Right, exactly. And if it was, if you had to sign up for a contract, what that included, how long it was for, that type of information. But we had received an email, or I shouldn't say, the parents had received an email from Principal Renda about certain apps that we're going through. So, I asked Eric, actually, I forwarded the email on to him and I asked him if he could go into all four buildings and lock down these specific apps at this time. and lock down these specific apps at this time, and he has.
Okay, good. Because that one email, that one letter we got was not pretty.
No, it was not.
It was very concerning.
So, and I'm grateful to the parent for picking up because, you know, again, when you're on the board, sometimes you don't see certain buildings or certain situations. So I was grateful for that, and I think that that's really key, is keeping that line of communication between the community and the board open.
Wide open.
So that way, we can address things quickly. And we did.
All right, one quick question. With the email, an email sent by the community or a resident or a parent to an individual board member in the past, did we, did we have that where the board chair would respond where as an individual board member, I would make you aware of the email? I just kind of thought that I remembered in the past that the chairman was the one that would actually respond to the question.
If it was to the group, yes.
Certainly, if it's addressed to the BOE as a whole or to the chairman.
Okay, maybe that's right. I just tried to make out.
I've taken that as things I need to respond to. If it was a letter directly to you, Harry, right, and you didn't even necessarily copy the rest of us, I think that it's important that we lock it so we make sure that Lisa does it. But it would be on you to respond to it. I don't want any man.
Okay, right.
If you ever want me to respond, you know, something that's broader than, you know, what you think you're comfortable doing, I'm very happy to jump in and respond on behalf of the board if you think that's an appropriate response.
Well, no, I think the key is if it's, you answered my question, is if it's, if it's sent to the board, that we just have the chairman.
Yeah, I agree. So I'm watching my email, and thank you for the reminder, by the way, because when I travel, I'm probably, I'm the one who does it for one day sometimes. And I apologize for anybody who's written and I didn't respond to. But the, I will, I try to get done those really fast. In fact, I've got one, we also received a note, I think, yesterday, and I drafted that response today. So that's going to go out tonight, so.
And Harry, with individual board members getting the email, the important thing there is that it's app reliable. So it does need to be, you know, forwarded so I can keep it in the written correspondence file and then forward it to Lisa, who also keeps one as well.
Good.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So is that it, Tara? Or do you have others on that?
That was it.
That was it?
That was it.
Any questions for Tara on the Communications Subcommittee? Now, we have two reports for Business and Facilities, but Paul's not here. Did he arrange with either of you to report on that? Or do you want to, should we punt it for the next meeting? It would be fun to punt it for the next meeting for Paul. All right, we're punting out those two. Ad hoc update. I didn't want to have you end up.
Wait, you didn't even get all the reports?
I mean, I'm going to laugh.
You know, you see, I cut my mouth shut, like I was like, ah! I was like, when I realized Paul wasn't going to be here, I'm like, I've got all the Subcommittee reports. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. It's okay. You know, you go out with a bang.
Updates on that, huh?
All right. Ad hoc met on the 31st of May, and I know you're all going to be ecstatic to believe the RFP is out to bid. The only thing that I have here is we had set up the bid opening for the 20th of June. I had to make a couple modifications. When you start looking at a 50-page document, you forget where some things are and trying to get it out the door. I had to put an addendum on it. So we pushed back the date till the 22nd of June for tomorrow. So those bids are due tomorrow. I know that there's been a couple of questions from a couple of different people. So I can tell that there is interest in it, which is always a good thing. When nobody wants to bid it, or nobody wants to take a look at the RFP, that is when there is issues because then you start to get antsy. But I know that there has been some questions and some movement on it. So I'm very grateful for that, and I'm very anxious to see how that will turn out. I'm hopeful. Mr. Gaze is going to prepare a spreadsheet with the bid results to give to the committee to review so that we can do a shortlist to start interviews. We did set up a meeting, the next meeting for ad hoc on Thursday, July 6th at 6:00 PM at the Media Center. And at that point in time, they will start to discuss, take it to the shortlist for that movement, start proceeding to start that work.
All right, excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, because we wanted to get that done in the summer, right?
Yes. My philosophy, and I did talk to the committee when we were there, my philosophy and my thought process behind it was, if we're going to look at buildings, the best time to look at buildings and look at structure and everything to do with it is when students are not in it. So we have a short window, obviously, before school starts. But I'm very confident that we can get someone on board who can come in, do the assessments, and they might even come back when the first couple of weeks of school to just see how the flow of children are in these buildings as well. But really, my main focus is the structure and a lot of the systems of the buildings. So the children are not my high priority. My high priority is the buildings themselves.
Right. I agree with that. That's a big piece of information.
Right. And with that way, I don't have to inconvenience staff or students to be able to get a look at these buildings.
Agreed.
Harry?
Thank you.
Really? Good.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on ad hoc? We'll move on. And next up is a consent agenda.
Recommended motion that the board approve the items listed below on the consent agenda as recommended. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Mr. Burrell, would you like to make any comments on the consent agenda?
Sure, absolutely. The first, I would like to start with Mrs. Jane Gimblett-Merritt from Whiskaneer, one of our special educators. She is retiring, announced her retirement a little later in the year, and we're so congratulate, we congratulate her on her decision after 23 years of service in Brookfield. So I think I added up, we have now, with Mrs. Gimblett added on, 354 years of experience retiring from the district this year. So quite a bit. And we just thank her for her service. She is not only a fine educator, but just a wonderful individual. So we're really proud of her and happy for her. And then we have tremendous news. We had, as the board knows, we had the Director of Instruction and Director of Special Services Special Education positions open after a thorough candidate search and very rigorous interview process. We are hiring two fine individuals to fill the vacancies. I'd like to start with veteran Brookfield educator, Deb Ferris. Would you please stand? I'd like to recognize you. Welcome. As you know, Bob has been a longtime curriculum specialist at Center School, was a grade four teacher before that at Huckleberry, and this year actually stepped up, stepped in, and did a great job as the interim assistant principal at Huckleberry for about three months. We're very proud of the work she's done. She enjoys a tremendous, she enjoys tremendous credibility and trust with the faculty, the administration, and staff and parents. And so we're just so glad you're on board in this new position, and we look forward to all the work that you're going to do on behalf of students here in Brookfield. So again, welcome and congratulations, Deb. Thank you.
That's great. Congratulations.
And next, we, we're looking for someone in the Special Services position as artfully described, is we're looking for Mr. Nanos on steroids. Can we find that person? Can we find that person? And we have that person, Dr. Christine Sapala. Dr. Sapala, you can stand, Christine, and welcome. Christine's a veteran educator from New London and spent her entire career there at this point. She actually is a school psychologist by initial background coming into the public school arena. Also did her master's degree work and her dissertation work for her doctorate in the area of reading and literacy. So she really balances the academic world and the mental health world. And we're really looking forward to another specialty of hers, which is building strong relationships with the community and with the staff. So we're excited to have you on board, Christine. Anything to say or say hello?
Thank you. I'm really thrilled to begin working here. I think that, I think very highly of this to start, and I think that has increased even more so through the interview process as I got to talk to staff members and parents and even tonight, you know, people have come up and talked to me. This is obviously a district full of dedicated and hardworking people, so I really appreciate that. Can't wait to get started.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah. Thank you.
And there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beland. Oh, and a press release will go out after, right after the meeting tonight, and an email to the staff letting everybody know.
Okay, excellent.
Of our new positions.
All right. All in favor of the approved consent agenda?
Aye.
All right. We'll move on to new business. First item of new business tonight is a discussion on the Narcan policy.
This is a recommended action that the board discussed the adoption of a Narcan policy as recommended by the Director of Special Services, Charlie Manos, in the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, so. Steve, did you want to, you want to start a little bit? And maybe Charlie, if you could come up to the podium?
Absolutely.
And just, I'm sorry, Steve, but this is not for first reading tonight. Want to make that clear? This is, we discussed it for probably the second time at Policy Committee, looking at the Narcan policy and procedures. And we want to just bring it for board discussion, and we're going to do a little bit more work on it this summer before we bring it for first reading.
So first off, thanks to Superintendent Burrell and to Mr. Manos for bringing this to the Policy Subcommittee's attention. So as everyone knows, that this is, you know, overdosing and opioids and substance abuse has become a significantly serious epidemic, not only in this state, but in this country. And Narcan has really been a miracle in saving so many lives. And so I think Superintendent Burrell and Mr. Manos, and I think a lot of the faculty, thought it would be a good idea to at least have a discussion about having a policy surrounding the implementation and the administration of Narcan to save a life in the unfortunate circumstance either a student or a staff member had an overdose on school grounds. With that said, we, I think Superintendent Burrell contacted our legal team, and they kind of guided us on some policies and some regulations that were currently in place or were recommended by CAPE. The Fairfield Public School District actually implemented something, I think, maybe about a month ago.
Mm-hmm. Very current.
Correct. In regards to a policy surrounding the administration of medicine and specifically Narcan or naloxone?
Naloxone.
Naloxone, okay. I have a, I think everyone, both Superintendent Burrell and myself and Harry had a little trouble today with the proper pronunciation of the formal title of it. But in my opinion, I think the Fairfield Public Schools' policy is very, is broad, but I think in this specific instance, I'd like it to be broad. I really think that it would be a good idea for the board to set a narrative for the administration to create a regulation, which is broad for our administration, staff, and frankly, anybody that's properly trained on school grounds to be able to utilize this drug to possibly save a life in an unfortunate circumstance if something occurs. So, and the CAPE policy seems to be a little more restrictive. I don't know, I don't want to say restrictive, but a little more lengthy and regulatory. But with that being said, I think, open it up to both Superintendent Burrell and Charlie, and anything you.
Sure. And Charlie, if I may, just before you go, the one thing with the administration of Narcan, the lawyers made it analogous to having a similar policy to our AED policy, the defibrillator policy. Not treating it as an administration of medicine, but really looking at it as something that's a public safety issue and having a broad administration, as you're talking about, with those obviously trained folks. So I want to just conceptually paint that picture for the board, and maybe turn it over to Charlie with some of the rationale.
Sure. You know, I sort of see this as a, as part of our global strategy in terms of addressing students with social emotional needs and students who have addiction issues. So I don't see this as sort of separate department. This is an extension, I think, of the work that the district has done, that Brookfield Cares has partnered with us, as all part of that. This is a natural extension and progression of that. I want to give a little bit of a background and rationale for how we sort of came to this, as John and I spoke about this. It is at an epidemic level. In Connecticut, one to two individuals die each year of opioid overdoses. That's a pretty significant number. One in four teens reported the use of opioids for non-medical reasons. That's about 25% of the adolescent population.
Wow.
It's the leading cause of death. If you combine automobile accidents, fires, and use of firearms combined, there are more deaths through opioid overdoses than all of those put together, which is a pretty significant number. In 2013, so these numbers are dated, so they're a little bit of an under-reflection. 2.2 million adolescents ages 12 to 17 were current opioid drug users. So it is a significant issue. And the use of naloxone or Narcan really is safe and effective. Actually, it was approved back in 1971 by the FDA for the use, and it has been a pretty safe and effective antidote to opioid addiction. So there's probably very little risk in using it. Tragically, many parents have Narcan in their homes because of the epidemic of drug addiction in families. So they use that, this is a pretty common practice. Probably parents don't talk about it as much as they should because I think the shame and stigma that's still attached to the disease of drug addiction, but many parents will have that in their homes out of fear that their youngster will overdose, and they want that on hand. I also want to sort of kind of take us to the fact that this kind of trauma we see in other ways. We have the answer of overdose, and we have the trauma of children in our schools who are suffering the consequences and ramifications of that. And I was saying to John that just today, I had a very sad conversation with a parent whose son had lost his father to an opioid overdose. So we may not necessarily have to use it, and I hope we never have to at our high school or middle school, but each day, we see sort of the traumatic consequences of children who suffer from addictions in their families. And oftentimes, we will see the loss of a parent. So kind of give sort of a bigger rationale for what you're using it at this particular time.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Sure. Thank you.
So I think part of the reason to bring it up to the board this evening is to let you all know that this is, as Charlie said, a natural extension, a broader part of our look towards social and emotional support for our students and our partnership with Brookfield Cares. So we wanted to let you know that we're working on this. This is something, if everything goes well, we might have in place before the school year starts. If not, we might have to wait till September, you know, with our 30-day rule and so forth. But we're going to work on it, try to have a meeting before the July, what is it, 19th? Board meeting, and have something in place for you so we can bring it for a first reading. And we also bring it to the board to, if there's any feedback or any concerns or things you might want the Policy Committee to be thinking about as we work on policy.
Yeah, I just want to jump on it.
For sure.
So I don't believe there's a meeting in between now and 19th, correct?
We would have to try to schedule it.
Right. No, and so my thought process is, is that the board now, the full board, has the CAPE policy and has the Fairfield Public Schools' policy. And I would highly recommend that any member who, you know, who wants to look into both those policies would make their recommendations, you know, email it to me or Harry or to Paul prior to our next policy meeting. Because that will help craft what's done for a first reading. And I think that if we take everybody's ideas and thoughts initially at the beginning, it might make the process a lot more smooth it might make the process a lot more smooth, and therefore allow the policy to be in place on the first day of school next year. So, yeah, please, please read through it and give, give me any feedback that you may have, because I think, you know, if there's something that, you know, this is some of the most important things we might do, because in the unfortunate circumstance, something happens, you know, this, this could be saving a life, so.
Okay.
So, which one is the CAPE policy, and which one's the...
At least I have two separate...
Steve, we didn't pass out the Fairfield's.
Is it possible that you...
We can do that.
Did you email it to us?
We have a hard copy, so we could do that.
Okay.
We can pass that out, that's fine.
This is the CAPE policy.
So, you have a CAPE regulation in front of you, and also, four pages in is a background for use of naloxone in the school setting, which is a very deep dive, so it really gives a nice background. I've been through it, and it really is just a good background to inform Board members before, you know, acting on such policy.
And the Fairfield Public Schools' policy, I think, Lee says copies of.
Yes, that'll be coming around.
Yeah.
Steve, I also want to just...
Which is always very good.
Mention again that we did want to take it further than a student service, that it would be for anyone on campus, whether it be a teacher, or a school employee, or even someone in an athletic event.
Yeah.
You know, rather than just a student service.
Thanks, though.
So...
Some sobering statistics.
It really is sobering statistics. I think the, as we think about it, I would just ask you to think about, I think, training for the admin, it has to be very clear in our policy.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we ought to make sure we've cleared with council on what liabilities we may have upon administration of such a...
Yeah, and that's been discussed...
We've discussed that as well.
Yeah, no, you're, those are all very good points.
But it's, but I'll tell you, it's very sobering, and we really do need to provide some degree of support here.
An important piece to know as well is that the Brookfield Police Department, the police officers are trained in Narcan application, and they actually carry it with them. So, that means our SROs do carry it with them, just so you know, at middle and the high school.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Charlie.
Okay. Next up is the approval of Perkins' grant.
Recommend a motion that the Board approve the concept and sustainability of the Perkins' Innovation Grants submitted to the State Department of Education. Scott.
Okay, moved and seconded. Mr. Barrio, do you want to talk through this one?
Sure, actually, I invite Mr. Beland up to the podium, just share a little bit about Perkins' Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Barrio.
You're welcome.
This is essentially an entitlement grant that we're, basically, federal money that we're allowed to apply for. We are going to ask from the government for $17,121. With the help of Shannon Lundarello, who is our new college and career counselor, in coordination with Rob Zapor, who's the Career and Techno Education Department Head, as well as our Family and Consumer Science and Business Teachers, and some of our club advisors, they've put together a pretty reasonable request for some of the things that we can do that will help support our programs. One of the things you'll see in there, they're going, we're going to start working on, and this will come up at CAPE in the spring, in the fall, excuse me, to do a Create Your Own Business program, an actual course where students would work through, using a 3D printer, in conjunction with the Robotics and Engineering courses, and the DEC and Marketing students actually develop their own business, have model business plans, and actually put it out to community, and actually start to actually generate, generate some revenue, and some real, like, hands-on experience, things that we are really looking to do. So, that's one of the big pieces that you'll see, actually comes up in property for actually purchasing the 3D printer. There's also a couple of things that we'd like to continue to do, something like the Healthcare Shadowing Program that we do with Ed Advance, formerly Ed, what were they before? Ed Connection. They actually come and supervise, which is, which is fantastic, and administer a program where we allows, allows us to send 12 different students to onsite job shadowing with healthcare professionals in the field, whether it be at urgent care, pediatrician's office, doctors' offices. So, Perkins' Grant will be able to pay for a portion of that, and we've already budgeted some funds to actually fulfill that entire requirement, but Ed Advance charges us, which is about $6,000, which is pretty expensive, when you think about the insurance and liability and all those things that are incorporated with that. It's a good bang for your buck and gets some kids some really great experiences. Also, Student Transportation Services, that's about $5,600 in the request. That includes essentially field trips, where it's sending kids from HOSA, DECA, FBLA, where going to Career Days, Webster Bank Arena, MetLife Arena for Sports and Entertainment Marketing, the Supreme Court, Connecticut Supreme Court for Business Law, looking to go to Behringer for our Engineering Courses. You know, way more inflating for the Interior Design Course, which are running again this year, things like INSEBA for the Manufacturers' Day. So, this money allows us to fund those buses and those field trips, those registrations that get kids out into the community to really see hands-on things that they need to see that would connect them to future careers. There's also some money in there for conference registrations for things like the teachers going to the Personal Finance Conferences, the Career and Techno Education Conferences, and the Family and Consumer Science Conferences. All these individual teachers belong to organizations for their teaching, just like there's an English Teachers Organization, there's one for every other one as well, so that pays for them to go to those sorts of things. And then in the supply line, which is the hapdest, one of the hapdest lines, there's a, for, there's a line for precision exams. So, this is an online tool that we're using. When we look at Perkins' funding, if we accept Perkins' funding from the federal government, we apply, they say, "You're going to get it," we actually have to test our students in certain competencies to make sure that they meet the levels of expectations that they're supposed to. Having these precision exams gives us a very clear tool, which we can use and progress monitor, and gives us reports that helps, and from what some people say, not me, but from what I'm hearing, is even more accurate and better than the actual test that is given called the NOCTI. So, this actually gives us the feedback we need to adjust our programs, and helps things along the way to make sure they get to the point of mastery with some of these core competencies in the Career and Techno Education fields. We're also getting for HOSA an anti-choking trainer, which is something that ends up costing a significant amount of money, I think, to the tunes of $1,000, but it's going to help the students better train and prepare for possible situations moving forward. And then the 3D printer is the big property there at $2,700, roundabout total, comes to about $17,000. I'm asking for permission to have the Superintendent sign it and apply for the funding. Generally, what happens is we apply for the funding, they'll come back with some questions, you know, specifically as to what we're going to use it for. We have it laid out pretty well, they want to make sure and fine-tune, everything's all set, and then we would send this off and move on from there. So, that's essentially a two-minute, fastest I can talk, to get it out to you, so you understand.
Questions from the Board?
I just want to make a statement, I'm happy to see this coming towards the Board for approval, so, thank you.
My pleasure. Other than that, and not, it hasn't always come to the Board?
No, it has. In previous years, we have seen it. There has been, the current year that we're in, we did not see it.
Correct.
So, I am happy to see it returned again, because I think it was a great grant to begin with.
Right.
And I understand the circumstances of why we didn't see it for the current year, and I'm okay with that, but I am, like I said, grateful and happy to see it come back to the Board for approval tonight, so thank you.
And impressed with the detail on the grant, too.
Yes, very much so.
It was all spelled out very nicely.
What I would like to, I give that credit to Shannon Lundarello entirely. Shannon has really taken this as our new college and career counselor, this is one of the things that kind of falls under her umbrella, and she's really embraced it wholeheartedly, and has done a great job with it.
I think this will be a great addition to this.
It helps when you have an English teacher writing the grant, too.
Got it covered.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, next up is the Food Service Contract Extension.
Recommend a motion that the Board approve the extension of Whitson's Food Service Contract for the 2017-2018 school year as recommended by Director of Business and Operations, Ken Post. Scott.
Okay, moved and seconded. So, Ken, do you want to give us a brief overview?
I will do that. It's not quite as exciting as the Perkins' Grant. As you know, the Brookfield Noguata bid in the spring of 2016, as did many other districts in the state, and Whitson's was the successful bidder. When the bid is awarded, it's technically awarded for five years, but it is done in a series of one-year contracts. You do the first contract, which is very thick and full of mostly state-mandated language, and then every year, you do an amendment, which was in your packet today, which is, again, mostly state-mandated language. And it's up before the Board for approval, so that we can send it on to the, to the state and continue our relationship with them for one more year.
Did the, did the Business and Facilities Committee...
We did. We had a discussion about it. I can only speak for myself. I do know that Paul and I, and I'll say from previous, and I won't, previous experience, we've had a little bit of frustration with Whitson's, but I am happy to report this year, we have seen turnaround. I know from Paul's discussion with students, and with my discussion with students, that we're seeing great improvement, and I have seen, I actually went in, I believe, twice, I think it was either twice or three times, I can't remember, to the high school when they were serving food. Actually, Principal Belanda was serving food one day, but I was gracious enough to see that, and you could see the quality of food, and the actual increase in students buying food has increased in that building, so that, to me, is a good sign. We still have work to do, but I'm seeing the improvement at the high school, and that was, that was the greatest need and concern for us, because at one point, we were actually trying to figure out ways of changing it, not necessarily with the company, but the way that we handle food service there. Now, I'm seeing fast improvement. Huckleberry is also doing well, we have some work to do with the other two buildings. We have talked to Whitson's about that, they are aware of it, and I have complete confidence that they will get that under control, because of how I've seen how they've handled this year. I cannot speak enough, and I'm sure Paul would do the same, about how the high school has improved. And that was really one of our key buildings that we were very concerned about.
So, you would support signing this?
Absolutely, and I think Eve would as well, from the discussion that we had at the Subcommittee Meeting, we have seen a big improvement, we're very happy with it. I, I don't see any reason why we would not extend for a one-year contract.
Any other question? I think realistically, the BNF Committee really shouldn't be having this conversation earlier, in case there is some reason, if you want to make a change, now really wouldn't be the time.
Correct.
Okay, no more, no further questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the last item in new business is Teacher Evaluation Plan Update.
Recommend a motion that the Board receive and approve the Teacher Evaluation Plan Update as presented by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Marine Ruby.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ter.
One second.
She's usually faster than me.
I know.
Last night, we had a presentation at the CAPE Committee Meeting on the work that was done by the Teacher Evaluation Committee, and tonight, Mary Rose Diamond is representing the Committee to present to you some what appear to be minor changes to the, to our document, our plan document, but we, the Committee believes will have big impact on how our, our plan actually works. The way, the way the state has set up making changes to the plan has changed. Two years ago, you had to submit the, the actual plan by a certain date, and cross your fingers and hope that they would accept it, or at least get back to you. Districts complained about that, and so, the new format for changing teacher evaluation plans, getting approval, it's like on a, like a rolling admissions type of situation. So, as you, you may or may not be aware, when a, a plan is approved by a Board of Education before it's submitted to the state, and so, I have to say that the Committee, and Mary Rose will talk about this, the Committee worked endlessly this year. There were initially monthly meetings, which then became two meetings a month, and I think in the last six weeks, we, they were meeting, like, every week. And then, having subcommittees or subgroups that were meeting on their own. So, there was a lot of work that went into what may appear to be very small changes, but I think when Mary Rose explains it from both the teacher point of view and from the admin point of view, you'll see that they're beneficial.
And I think there will be more to come, so, you know, we wanted to make sure that whatever's presented tonight will be with the place for next year, but there's, there are a lot of moving pieces, and we didn't want to rush into anything and then have to kind of step back again. So, the focus, the focus of the group has become feedback, in terms of how we're giving feedback to teachers, because that's kind of, that's the entire, the supporting plan. And so, what we talked about primarily in the last couple of weeks is knowing how important feedback is in order to shape practice and shape behavior and all those kinds of things, and wanted to make sure that we took a look at how teachers are receiving feedback, and make sure that that feedback is timely moving forward into this year, so that they can then take, take what they're hearing from their evaluators, and then influence, influence those changes in a more effective way, more efficiently, in a quicker way. So, the, the changes that we made, in ways that don't look like they're maybe significant, but for the teachers, it's going to mean that they're going to be getting timely feedback in a very, in an expected way, so they'll know when to expect to get that feedback within their evaluations and observations. And for the administrators, it gives us a timeframe within which to give the feedback, which is helpful as well, because life takes over sometimes, and the, the best intentions sometimes are not, are not followed through on. So, for teachers who are non-tenured, and in the observation cycle, third and fourth year novice teachers, I mean, if they've been with us for three or four years and have not been tenured in another district, or are from out of state, these teachers will be, again, having two formal in-class observations, each, again, with pre and post conferences, and the bulk of feedback will be expected to be given within five days, written feedback within 10 days of the observation, 10 school days. So, that is all the work we strive for, but now it'll be more, more codified in a more formal way. Same will be in place for teachers who are coming, tenured, who have a rating of developing, that's due to performance practice, so again, this is, this is, there's a lot of intricacies to the plan, but the bottom line, again, is that feedback after an observation, they provided verbal within five days and in written form within 10 days, and then the same will be in place for tenured teachers who have a developing rating due to their SOAs, again, feedback within five school days for verbal feedback, 10 school days for written feedback. And we also spent a lot of time discussing, for, for teachers who might be experiencing some difficulties, or, you know, there are some changes that have taken place and maybe are, could use some extra support, we talked about putting a mentoring plan in place between the teacher and the administrator to come to an agreement on what that would look like moving forward to support that teacher. So, again, the biggest changes are around the timeline for this year, which I think would be a good, a good place for us to start, in making sure that teachers are getting the feedback that they need to have in order to make changes to the practice. Any questions, anything I can...
The, the other thing I wanted to add is that the calendar will be very specific in terms of when the specific observations need to take place, because while it was not widespread, there was discussion by teachers that in some cases, they didn't get their goals approved until after, you know, the, the time that they really needed to have them approved, and this was not as a result of negligence, but as Mary Rose said, and we all know, I mean, things start, things come up, and you have scheduled meetings and scheduled observations, and they get canceled and rescheduled, and it's always that person that keeps getting rescheduled. Well, now, having very specific dates in the, the contract, the, the plan, is going to have a level of accountability that we didn't have before, which will be really important. And teachers need to feel comfortable going to an administrator, and it's, it's a tricky situation because of the relationship. You want to have a positive relationship, and you want feedback, but you don't want to insult anybody or make, risk getting on their bad side if they have a bad side. This is going to help us, it's going to help both the admins and, and the teachers. And in terms of future changes, there's a lot, there's a lot happening on the state Teacher Evaluation Committee, where they're allowing portfolios of work to be used for evaluation, and we discussed that, we had a facilitator come in and discuss that, but I think that the Committee was very cautious and not jumping on the next greatest thing, but just taking the parts of our plan that, that are supporting what our, our work is and keeping them, and then just tweaking the things that are causing it to not work as fluently as we would like it. But we're open to seeing how this goes, and seeing how other districts do with the other changes that are being allowed by the state.
But we keep trying to come back to what the purpose of the plan is, the purpose of the plan is to improve practice, so how, what are the tweaks that we need to make in order to really, you know, to serve that purpose?
And I should note that this was discussed in significant depth and detail last night at the CAPE Meeting, and everyone at the CAPE was in favor of bringing this forward to a full Board vote.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Mary Rose. Okay, we all felt, I just will add, at the CAPE Meeting, we felt it was logical, and it put more discipline in the process, and it made sense, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Old business, we have, we have, we have two items, we've read them, we read the motions the last time, I'm not going to make you read them this time.
There you go.
For the record, for those who did it, if you recall, we tabled these two motions, and can come back for further discussion tonight. So, the motions are still open on the table, and, and we will, we will answer the questions that we asked the last time, and decide we're going to go over them this evening. that we asked the last time and decide we're going to go over them this evening. So Ken, I think you took the comeback items from last time.
Sure. I think the two biggest questions that came up were about the implications of taking the high school off of the National School Lunch Program. Financial-wise, it looks like this year, the cost, the revenue we would lose from the state for the free reimbursement for free and reduced lunches would be about $21,500, which is something that the board would have to cover. In addition, we get 30, total 36 cents reimbursement from the federal government per paid meal, which at the high school would be about $10,700. So the total loss of revenue of about $32,275. And that would be in addition to, if we did take the high school off the National School Lunch Program, we would not be able to do the healthy food certification, which would lose us the 10 cents per meal, which as I reported last year, last year we've got $12,695. This year, I believe it would be more because our participation is higher, especially at the high school. So those are the financial pieces. I think it would be worth investigating, but I think we need to take a thoughtful approach to this and bring Whitson's in to meet with the BNF committee to discuss this because it's, there's a lot more to it than just changing the menus at the school. There are administrative and financial record-keeping implications because you really have to treat it as two separate food programs, one that's off the National School Lunch Program and one that is on.
Right.
And keep everything separate and make sure that one is not subsidizing the other. So it's a lot more complicated than just saying, let's feed the kids differently and forward some revenue. So if the board would like, I would be happy to have them come in and have a conversation with us about what steps we would have to take to do that. And then the other question that came up was with the second motion on the exemptions that the board is allowed to approve. And basically, the board has two choices. There are three criteria that are mentioned in the motion, that the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of a regular school day or on the weekend, the sale is at the location of the event, and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. So the board has two choices, either to approve this motion, which would allow any such event that qualifies, meets those criteria, to sell foods that don't follow the nutrition standards, or the board can approve every individual event upon request. And again, and at those times, those events could have to meet the criteria.
There's a lot of events. Yeah, that's a lot of events.
Well, I just, not even workload, my idea would be actually doing it in time, but just months.
Right, that's what I, I wasn't, right, I wasn't thinking, I was thinking, you are, which is timeline, which you would have to put, I mean, you would have to put that in so far in advance to be able to get the approval, and if something comes up...
And there are a lot of events.
Yeah, right.
So I agree at some place that there would have been, you could put in your motion an exception process, that doesn't exist?
Well, the exception, if you don't do the motion as you can hear...
You need a motion for an exception process.
I don't believe you need a motion for an exception process. People can, the board can grant an exception.
Exception.
Okay. Was that, my theory wasn't the generic. It was that one-off situation that was the, it was the right thing to do, that we had a vehicle to deal with it if it were to come up.
My question is, I know Paul and I asked this question, or I asked this question, I'm not quite too sure which one of us did because it's been a while since that meeting and I've been quite busy. We asked to reach out to another school district that does for the first one for 12A that we know ops out their high school. Did we get in contact with them?
I come from a district.
Okay, you come from a district who does that, okay. Just because I know Whitson's is at the other district, so it was more of, I was curious about that, that I guess we could have them at BNF and actually have that conversation there to see which way we wanted to go. I see that we're running out of time for this year, though. That's my only thing, but I think it would be pertinent to have BNF at least start that conversation for the future.
I agree.
School year. I don't think necessarily '17, '18 is going to be the proper time or place for it, just due to time constraint, but I would like them to give that information because I think it's very important because somehow Newtown has figured it out.
Right, and you're part of it.
Right.
So was it, was it onerous in your district? Because you would have been in the middle of any record-keeping types of reports, I'm guessing.
When the, when the state changed the rules a few years, up until a few years ago, there was no different record-keeping. So it was a little bit onerous, but it's really more onerous on the food service management company than it is on us.
So it would say the right place to talk is Whitson.
Absolutely.
I think that's where we need to start for looking for the future, just because I'm, I know I was very curious because somehow they've made it work. Because I know they've been doing this for at least two years, if not three. And it just, you know, if we can give this, I know one of the struggles at the high school...
Whitson's covers that in Newtown as well.
Right. And I know one of the issues, and maybe Mr. Belanda will agree, is, you know, you've got growing children, growing teenagers, I will call them children, I've got growing teenagers, young adults, and, you know, if they're playing sports, you know, they're looking for a huge food intake, and because of the restrictions, because of the programs we are on, it limits them. And, you know, that's tough. That's tough to tell a kid, this is your meal, and that's all you can get, you know, because of those types of restrictions. So I think that's why I constantly push for the high school to have these conversations because I see that, you know, kids are getting a meal but also bringing food with them to supplement the meal.
I've experienced that.
Right, I mean...
I'd have to have two athletes.
Right, exactly. And it's usually with the athletes, and, you know, obviously, looking at the report that we got tonight from Mr. Baldwin, you know, you're talking about 66% of the body, student body is athletes, you know, it's something that I think this board needs to have a serious discussion about because if they're, you know, if we're not providing them what they need as students and as athletes and as, you know, young adults, we need to, we need to address it.
Especially under the vein of a good nutrition standard.
Correct.
Practice, which is that the practice is hurting the kids who need it.
Exactly.
That's a bad practice.
Right. And that's why I said, I can't remember if it was Paul or if it was myself, you know, I'm sure Eve, we've all talked about it.
So what I'm hearing you say is, we probably ought to proceed with this, but let's team up as a major discussion for BNF.
Yes, I think it's...
Of all planning for '18, '19.
I think so. I think it's time, right.
Sure, absolutely.
I would also ask whether BNF, after they get a chance to go through it, whether we ought to engage in some lobbying efforts at the state level about what we believe are the more appropriate. I mean, we're part of the state Board of Education broadly, right, and if we need to give them feedback and input, you know, and through Steve, through the legislature if necessary.
Yeah. Ken, is this legislative or is this through the state Board of Education?
I think it's through the State Department of Education Bureau of Nutrition.
I think it's the Department of Education.
I think there's lobbying at the Department of Education.
Okay. I think it's still helping that effort.
Sure.
Even though it's not legislative, I can still contact the Department of Education.
But I think that we, if we have an opinion that the standards are not serving children right, I think we ought to stand up, I think, Ken. Right? I mean, that's, so, okay. Any other discussion on this item? Thank you, Ken. All right, so this first motion, which was read at the last meeting on item A, which has to do with the healthy food certification, it's been moved and seconded at our last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And the second item, the healthy food certification consideration two, which has to do with the sale of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards in those situations where the event, it's an event outside of the school day, at the location of the event, are not sold from a vending machine or school store. That motion was also moved and seconded at our prior meeting. I'm not going to make you read it again.
It was a little easier.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I said aye.
That is it for Old Business. So next on our agenda is upcoming events.
This Saturday, June 24th, from 12:00 to 2:30 p.m., is a walk-through of the grad party. If anyone has not done this, I so recommend it. The transformation of this high school is breathtaking, and as Stephen said, this is a complete community effort. It's not just parents of graduates or just even parents period, but the entire community comes together and puts on a fabulous, fabulous party and to safely keep these new grads the night of their graduation. And they, the participation is 97%, I believe. So highly recommend, the entire public is welcome to walk through the high school from 12:00 to 2:30 on Saturday.
Except for the grads.
Except for the grads, yes. It's a surprise for them the minute they come in. That same day, the June 24th, is the Brookfield High School graduation ceremony. This is 5:00 p.m. at the Western Connecticut O'Neill Center, and as I'd said, the grad party is that night at 10:30. And our next sporting event meeting is Wednesday, July 19th, 7:00 p.m. here at the Median Center at High School.
Out of curiosity of the board members, who will be able to make it to the graduation?
I'm just to see Steve.
You want to go to Steve?
Just take pictures, okay?
I've never been.
You've never been?
Long story. As a board member, I've never been. I'd be saying...
Yeah. No, Steve, I understand because it's always very tough because it's birthday week for our house. It's a very tough, tough of a week for me.
Well, I'm glad we can have a good turnout. That's great, so. All right, so thank you, Collette. So last on our agenda is an executive session.
Recommend a motion that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's goals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director of business contracts.
Second. Okay, so it's moved and seconded. All in favor entering into executive session?
Aye.
All right, so for the... We are not adjourning that evening right now. We're moving into executive session. When we come out of executive session, we will adjourn.
Can I ever get my email up? My email, she can get my email.
Thank you for joining in.
Thanks, Mark.